Pull them out of there and put them in work out in Lawrence County. But why didn't they do that two years ago? Why didn't they put them on the list two years ago? Because they didn't care, they dropped the ball. They didn't want to be responsible to do their job. And I know I get excited, you might have to get a cane and pull me out the door. But I'm sixty-six years old, I have a twenty-one-year-old kid. I've been bottling this system for seventeen years. And I'm tired of it because nobody wants to be responsible. They won't even think out of the box. I mean, then I travel eighty miles a day. I told them in the beginning, I wasn't doing it for getting paid for forty miles because their rule is you can only get paid sixty-seven cents a mile when the kid is in the car. So it's better be finding somebody. Well, here I am transporting them eighty miles a day and their answer is, "We can't find a provider. The ax bus won't put an aid on the bus." Well, you just run all these programs. Does anybody think out of the box? I mean, when I died, he was already in the group home, they almost killed him. Nobody did nothing, not the support coordinators. I went to Chris Sonata, he gave me a thing. "Here to file a complaint with the Attorney General's Office." They don't even want to hear it, they don't care. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but somebody needs to oversee the mental health at office over there in Lawrence County. And I filed a complaint against them and I had a thing with them and they outright lied. They said, I called the ODP, don't be calling them today. They said, "We're not responsible to make sure the support coordinators are doing their job." Denise Zona and Scott Baldwin. They are most certainly responsible to make sure that the support's coordinating. They're over there rubber stamping stuff. There's five hundred and some people in Lawrence County with disabilities. How many other families are not getting the services that they're qualified for because nobody does their job? They don't even have literature to give you over there, not even literature. I had to fight them to get a book to find providers that I had to find myself. And they said, "We gave you that." Well, I got a letter from the Deputy Superintendent at ODP proving that they had to call Lawrence County and make the Human Service Center give me the rest of providers because nobody wanted to do it. And I argued with them and everybody's mad at me, but I don't care. Let the chips fall where they may because something needs done to help the disability people. I know here's how, it's a big mass is what it is. But I'm going to start at the ground floor. If I gotta go to Lawrence County Court, if I gotta go to federal court, I'm going because something that you can't just keep rubber stamping things. I mean, I'm guilty of it too, but I was involved in every ISP meeting. If they don't put the information in there, I'm trusting the system to do the job and they don't do it. And then I get answers like, "Oh, you can't go to the meeting because we have catered lunch." Well, the Mental Health Law nineteen sixty-six says, nobody in the county even knows that exists. How come they don't put it in the newspaper? How come they don't send it to the parents or the people with disability kids? I mean, I will fight for my kid, but there's other people. I did it for years, I believe whatever they tell me. Well, I have no trust in Lawrence County Mental Health at all. And I've told them that Greg Hall, Scott Baldwin, step up and be responsible for what you were supposed to do. And I mean, that's all I got to say. I'm sorry if I get excited and rant, but if you had a disabled kid, there's people that are in worse shape than me because they don't have the whatever. I got intestinal fortitude. I'll argue for my son, but there's probably poorer people that don't even have the resources that I have and nobody will even offer them the proper resources because it's just rubber stamp, rubber stamp. I mean, after that, I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Appreciate your being here. Are there other public comments this morning? Mrs. Hahn, good morning.
Good morning. First, thank you for releasing the document regarding the resolution for the Ford Office Technologies. It's kind of vague, so it could have been anything. And now that I have a copy of the record, I see it's just for a prayer. Thank you very much. But I would like to remind the board that all of the board documents are public record and they need to be made accessible to the public before you vote on them. Public can't make comment to weigh in on those records or those approvals if we don't have access to them before the vote. Then my other comment today is a question. It was brought up at the last election board meeting about the ballots. And I'm wondering why the county is not able to get our ballots any earlier. We were told that sometime in the beginning of October, maybe middle of October. But by law, early voting is supposed to happen beginning fifty-two days before the election. So that's not going to happen. So I'd like to know more about what the delay is in our ballots being printed.
Thank you. I'll note that technically, but hear me out. Technically, we're not convened right now as the Board of Elections. So the question you had about the election matters would be more appropriate to come before us when we are meeting as the Board of Elections. That's technically. That being said, it is my understanding that we cannot print ballots until legal challenges are resolved at the state level. There are some candidates who have filed nominating petitions at the state level for some of the statewide offices. Those filings are being challenged in court. So right now, no county in the Commonwealth has the ability to print a ballot since we don't know who the final candidates are. If we were to print a ballot and allow people to start voting and then two or three days later, the court pulls somebody's name off of the ballot, that would create an issue. So it's my understanding that we're in this holding pattern, as is every other county in the Commonwealth, until these legal challenges to these candidates' petitions are resolved. Now, do my colleagues know anything else over and above that? If I misstated?
I think Chairman, your statement is correct. I know that the last time we had this discussion, Commissioner Gervini, they are waiting to get the approval. I mean, they want to get these ballots printed and they want to start the process as quickly as possible. But as Chairman Boker said, if they would print ballots and start the process and then the court rules in a different manner, we would have serious issues here in Lawrence County. So we're just following the guidelines that's been set by the state in Pennsylvania and we intend to follow the law to the T. That's exactly what Mr. Gervini is doing and the election board is doing because we do not want to see anything that can be challenged. We want to make sure it's done a proper way. So what you said is right on target. So we're just waiting. You know, once the court says that the candidates are fine, that Mr. Gervini will have those printed immediately. That's my understanding, that's the last conversation we have with him.
So we need a green light, for lack of a better term. We need a green light from the Department of State saying to us, "All of the issues are resolved, you may now start to print and distribute the ballots." But until we get that green light from the Commonwealth, we're in this holding pattern along with the other sixty-six counties.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hahn. Are there other public comments this morning? Hearing none, once again, we'll open it back up before we adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Under Fiscal and Contractual, we have warrant registers that have been provided to us by the County Controller's Office, also referred to as check reconciliation registers. It's a listing of the various bills that have been paid by the Controller's Office. These are dated August thirty, September four, and September six, twenty twenty-four. If anybody wishes to see them, we'll certainly share them with you. I'll give my colleagues time to look them over. And once you gentlemen are ready, I could take a motion for us to accept these documents. I move to accept the warrant resolutions. I'll second it. Thank you both, gentlemen. Do either of you have any questions about the warrant register? If not, we can take a roll call, please, to accept.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Also in our packet, we have the minutes of the Lawrence County Commissioners' meetings, actually that were held on August twenty-seven of this year, as well as September three. And again, gentlemen, if you could look them over and whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to approve the minutes. I'll make your own motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do either of you have any questions or concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. Under Written Communications, we have one document that will enter into the record. This comes from Pennsylvania American Water Company Corporate Counsel Theresa Harold out of Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. The letter we have in our packet was sent to the County Planning Commission. I'll also note that the Commissioners received a similar letter. And it's, actually, the one from the Planning Commission is a little bit older than the one we got. Yours is dated back in July. And I think we got one more recently. Either way, we want to enter this into the record. Pennsylvania American Water Company filed an application to the Public Utility Commission for approval of the right to offer, render, furnish, and supply water service in an additional portion of New Beaver Borough, Lawrence County, Pennsylvania. And the docket number is A two oh two four dash three oh four nine eight six five. And the Planning Commission has sent a letter of support because it's our understanding that this expanded service would include the Stonecrest Business Park on State Route eighteen in New Beaver Borough. So we're pleased to see this. That's the one document we have today. Could I have a motion for us to enter it into our records? I move we enter it into the records.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments, gentlemen? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next, we have Commissioner Reports and Comments. I get to go first today. I do want to note that tonight, we're kind of going in different directions because we've received actually two invitations to two different gatherings. The Beaver Lawrence Farm Bureau is holding their annual Fall Dinner Meeting in New Galilee in Beaver County. And I'll be attending that on behalf of my colleagues. Also tonight, Craig Youth and Family Services is holding a dinner in honor, I believe, is it their fortieth anniversary? And Mr. Sonata and Mr. Kennedy will be attending that dinner as well. So we congratulate Craig Youth and Family Services for their many years of helping people in our community. And thank you both, gentlemen, for attending that meeting. That's all I have this morning. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make it quick. Since Chris was out of town, I had to go do some visiting. So I went to Shenango Township with their craft show at the park. Very successful. Spent a couple hours out there with them guys and got to see them. And then I went to New Wilmington, my hometown. Got to see a concert Saturday night, so I got to play Chris for a couple days. Chris, I hope you had a nice time out of here, but you were back on Sunday. And back at it again, I see. That's all I have.
We might need you to do that again later this month at Old Timers' Day. But we'll talk.
Okay, okay.
Month that I'm calling you an old timer.
I'm the oldest one here, because you, yeah, but you look the youngest, so.
Well, thanks, Dan. Commissioner Sonata?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Dan. Sorry, I had to miss the Wade's final concert in New Wilmington. I know that they always bring the house down out there. Last year, when they performed out there, it was a huge crowd. And I know you said that we'll see it larger this year. So great band. Hopefully, I know they all have commitments and everything else. But if you ever heard of Wade, they were great for Lawrence County. Hopefully, sometime in the future, they can get together again and at least put on a special concert. I had an opportunity last Thursday in the morning to actually go out to the Lawrence County Day of Caring for the United Way and I just briefly talked about that. It was nice to see so many businesses in the community, social services, and especially the students from many of the local high schools that took part in that. I've always done that every year with my former staff. They used to go out in the community and do some community work. And sometimes I would help them. You know, working with some of these kids. Last year, I had the opportunity from the Carrick Technical School to be with those kids. And I'm going to tell you, some of those kids are so impressive. They have skills, Dan. They take after you a little bit with their skills, with their hands, knowing that. And they do a good job. I had a chance to visit with some of them this year out in Cascade Park. Ben Gale Young and all of those who participated in that. It was nice to see, it's like a community coming together. And you looked at it in paper and seen some of the stuff that they were doing. It's a good day and they had a huge house. And I know a lot of businesses. And I know Jerry Zona from the courthouse was there with his group, representing us as far as the county. So I just want to throw that out there. So there are a lot of good people in the community, especially when that comes for the Day of Caring. You see a lot of things happen. I even downtown, we were cleaning up and they were doing it that day. And it just doesn't happen on the Day of Caring. I know a lot of these groups are out there all the time trying to take community participation. That's one big day where you get all together, especially utility companies. I think we saw a water company and power and plumbing and gas. We had someone there. A lot of their employees were there for that day working. And it took time away from their other businesses or jobs. So I think that's important with businesses, allow their employees to do that. So that's really all I have. And look forward to next week and look forward to that dinner tonight with Craig for their fortieth anniversary. Chairman, you have us keep our regards to our farming community tonight. Certainly.
Thank you both, gentlemen. This takes us to new business and the first item from our court administration. And we're very honored today to have the new Lawrence County Court Administrator, Amy Gabuccio. Amy, if you'd mind coming up to the microphone. We congratulate you on your appointment.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that your appointment is actually made by the Court of the Commonwealth, the AOPC if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, yes.
So that's quite an honor.
Thank you.
And we know that you're going to do a great job. So we appreciate your joining us this morning. What number would we give this resolution?
Sixty-five.
Two six five. And this is a proposal for a maintenance agreement with the company that provides copier equipment services for the courts, Ford Office Technologies out of Connelsville down in Fayette County. Amy, I'll let you fill us in on any details that you might wish to share with us.
Sure. This is for the main copier on the third floor. It's utilized by all court administration staff and all the courtroom staffs or reporters. It's a high-speed, high-volume photocopier. It's also our fax machine that we utilize upstairs. We send, you know, notices out to the entire county. We are ending a current lease that was a five-year lease. And the new lease will also be five years. And it's actually going to save the county about twenty dollars a month. And we're getting a comparable piece of equipment with all the same, you know, features. And it'll be a brand-new piece of equipment.
If I'm reading this correctly, the monthly payment would be a hundred and ninety-seven dollars?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your providing us that information. Let me see if Commissioner Sonata has any questions.
No, but I appreciate giving a better lease for the county.
Yes.
Appreciate your diligence on that.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Kennedy?
In my past, I did one of these in Wilmington. They do all maintenance, they do all supplies, they do everything. And we've been here the same way. It's a good contract. I'll come with. Ours never went down a whole time I was there. They came and serviced it on a regular schedule. It works good. Same here, same people too.
Yes.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Unless there are any other questions, could I have a motion then for proposed Resolution two sixty-five?
I'll make your motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Amy, you're welcome to stick around, but knowing how busy you probably are, if you have to head upstairs, we understand.
Thank you all.
Thanks for joining us. Wish you a good day. Mike Grippo is here from CYS. Lisa Hadad is here from juvenile probation. Think for a second. Now, it looks like the first proposal, number two sixty-six, is an agreement with the Commonwealth. And if I'm reading this correctly, then the next three are contracts. Do I have that right? So I think what we ought to do, unless my colleagues object, is take the first one on its own and then we can take the contracts perhaps as a group, if that's okay with everybody. So the first one, number two sixty-six, is a proposed agreement between Children and Youth Services with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Child Welfare Information Solution, which is an exchange information process. But let me see if you want to fill us in on some of the details.
This actually is the bloodline. There's fifty-eight counties that's involved in it. And depending on the size of the county is the rate that you pay. So Lawrence County part of it's two thousand seven hundred forty-six counties, yeah. And again, that allows us using caps and the data sharing. It allows fifty-eight other counties use the same cap system that we use. So this is the shitty data.
You mentioned fifty-eight. We have sixty-seven counties. Any reason?
Well, like Allegheny doesn't use caps.
I'm sixty.
There's certain counties that don't use the cap system that we, yeah. I look for some day that it should be stamped.
Now, I'm embarrassed to ask this question, but my bad memory. Do we go through this process every year?
Yes.
That's what I thought. And when you said about Allegheny, then that triggered, yeah, you probably told me this a year ago. Now, these gentlemen weren't here, in fairness to them.
Yeah, not every county uses that.
Okay, it's all coming back to me now. So, but thank you for that. Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions. Okay, thank you. Chris, anything? Okay. So Mike, you're recommending that we approve this. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we accept.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions or concerns, we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, for the next three, Chris and Dan, if you're both all right, we can take them as a group. But please, we'll stop at each one in case you have questions. So the first one is a contract with Adelfoye Village. And Mike always gives us this document, which is very helpful. They are located in Latrobe, Westmoreland County. Mike or Lisa, who's handling this one?
I will.
Okay, Lisa, thank you very much. We'll turn it over to you.
So this is a renewal contract. I would probably venture to say Adelfoye is probably one of our top five type of placement facilities throughout the Commonwealth. JPO specifically uses them for institutional-type setting for youth. It could range from sex offenses to just general enhanced supervision. It would all be categorized typically as RN to JPO as an institutional, which would have a reimbursement rate of sixty forty, sixty percent being the state, forty percent being the county. We utilize them quite a bit. Because of their large capacity, they have more bed availability than your smaller-type settings and so forth. So we're trying to find a program specifically to match the needs of our youth. Chances are, they will have more availability as far as beds and so forth. So we tend to look if we need to go with the larger-type facilities than they've been able to accommodate us at the JPO level. I don't know if you have any to add, Mike, or not.
I mean, we use them for, we do use them for group home and foster. We currently have two CYS children there in the group home. But again, it's a co-partner between CYS and JPO. We use this facility.
You answered my first question, so thank you. My question was, do both of you use it? And obviously, you do.
Yeah.
They're based in Latrobe. Do they have facilities closer to Lawrence County, to your knowledge?
I want to say most of ours, Greensburg area, I don't know if that's a safe throw.
That's the same town, yes, Westmoreland County.
I think they also may have other facilities outside of that specific area of the state. That's typically where most of our youth are.
Thank you for that.
It's a large, I did an audit there, and it's a large, large facility.
Right. That's probably a good hour and a half, maybe two hours from there, the time you get there. Because Latrobe's beyond Greensburg, it's in an easterly direction, so. Well, thank you. I'll see if Mr. Sonata has any questions. No? Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay, thank you. That'll take us then, by the way, that was number two six seven. And then two sixty-eight would be Families United Network, Inc. of Muncie, Pennsylvania, which is out in Lycoming County. Who takes the lead on this one?
I will. It's a renewal, it's a foster care. The prices range depending on what unit they're in, twenty-one seventy-nine, one hundred and thirty-five a day. Currently, we don't have any children placed. Over the last two years, we've had four in twenty-two, twenty-three, and one in twenty-three, twenty-four. They are asking between three percent raise. But you notice at the bottom of that worksheet on the percent increase, you notice the specialized medical down, you notice now it decreased a lot. That's the importance of waiting for OCYF to approve rates. Because anything over that, the county is responsible. So that's why, this is what the first year that we were doing it, you know, and you can see where it reduced fourteen percent, twenty-four percent, six percent on the rate. So that's, on the rate, OCYF is what the group rate that they approved for. So we try to hold them to that because the county would be responsible for any consequences.
Appreciate your pointing that out, Mike. I'll ask Mr. Kennedy if he has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Sonata?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number two six nine would be the Summit Schools based in Herman, Pennsylvania, which is over in Butler County. Who takes the lead on this? Lisa does.
Summit School, it's also a shared renewal contract. So it's shared between CYS and JPO. If we would utilize this facility more than CYS has in the past, we like to be able to keep our kids as close as possible. So if the facility matches the needs, then we're looking close to foster family counseling, family visitation, being able to keep those relationships close as best we can. Summit provides services for drug and alcohol, regular residential. It's also an institutional-type setting where it's a sixty forty split. But again, they're probably one of our greater utilized facilities that we use in JPO. We would ask to be able to continue to use them, please.
Very good, thank you. I'll see if, pardon me, Commissioner Sonata has any questions?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy? All righty. Gentlemen, you've heard the proposals from both Mike and Lisa. These are numbers 267, 268, and 269. If you're so willing, we could take one motion to cover all three.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any other concerns? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Veltor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Well, it's good to see you both. I really appreciate your, and the time to join us today.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
I'll let you have it.
You're okay.
Well, the Planning Office has a couple of proposals for us, and Amy McKinney is our planning director. You're the second person named Amy to be seen today, you know, that's a good name. Number 270 would be an agreement that we would enter into with Beyond Corporation, which is based out in Edenburg, so I'm assuming they're more than likely in Mahoning Township. This is for, these are contracts for work to be done on three of our boat launches that the county owns, but can you fill us in, please?
Yeah, I can talk about both, both of them, actually.
Oh.
They're both.
Okay, so then.
They apply to the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy. They have a program where you can apply for funding to, for maintenance on boat launches. And one of the things, you know, one of their initiatives is to get people on the water. McKinney Russell is, actually, we were, it was funded through the WPC, so we were eligible to apply for a smaller amount for upkeep, some little maintenance. But because we have additional boat launches, we were able to apply for a lot of funds, and we received $21,000. And so these two resolutions would enter into contracts with both Beyond Court and North Beaver Contracting to do, to do work at our boat launches. And it's, it's work that's necessary. It's work that we've been talking with Joe that needs to be done. We've been working with Bill Humphrey, the county engineer, and luckily, we were able to receive some funding here to help cover most of the costs that need to be done. So Beyond Court would perform the work at Millennium and Beyond, Bevington. Millennium, Beyond, and Bevington Boat Launches. Those are, that would be Resolution 270. Beyond is the amount not to exceed 5,520. Millennium is the same, not to exceed 5,520. And Bevington is the amount not to exceed 5,520. As long as you guys approve that work, then they will, we will issue them a notice to proceed, and it will take them about two weeks to do it. And it's basically just doing some gravel of the parking lot, just, you know, brushing it up.
Let me ask you a few quick questions.
Yes.
Was this the first time we've received this grant money from the Conservancy?
Well, the first time we received it was for the McKinney Russell Boat Launches.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you noted that.
Yeah.
For this, for purposes of this.
This is the first time, yeah, they contacted us. We, they came out and looked at, and then they let us know that we were able, we had the ability to apply for this.
Did they require a format by which you had to follow in terms of how you, how you found the companies to do the work? Did you have to get bids? Well, no, you wouldn't have had to have gotten bids because the dollar amount for each one would be below the threshold, so. Okay. And then, just for the record, these are the five county-owned boat launches. The Beyond is in Mahoning Township on the Mahoning River, if I'm correct. Millennium is in the Shannick Township on the Shenango River. Bevington is in Wayne Township on the Beaver River. So before I'm going all right, Dan, let's see if I can get through the next two. McKinney Russell is on the Mahoning River, and it's in Mahoning Township. And then the McQuiston is in Polanski Township on the Shenango River. Wow.
Yeah, good.
That doesn't happen very often. I mean, a good day. Well, this is wonderful. Is it your expectation, and I think it says here, when we approve this, work must begin within two weeks of signing the contract?
Yes. Must start within two weeks of us signing the contracts and issuing the notice to proceed, and then they have three weeks to finish the work.
Okay, so it'll be done.
A month and a half.
That's great. Let me ask Mr. Kennedy if he has any questions.
No.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And Mr. Sinata?
No.
Okay, well, this is wonderful. And, you know, the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, they do a lot of good things in the Commonwealth, and they're best known for Falling Water, as you know, down in Fayette County, but they do a lot of other good things, so that's great. I really commend you for, whenever you initially established your working relationship with this organization, but obviously, you've enhanced it, so that's tremendous.
Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, if there, do you mind if we take both of these under one, under one motion? Okay. May I have a motion for 270 and 271?
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Chris, I thank you. Any other questions for Amy? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Veltor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Amy, I'll note it when we adjourn, before we adjourn, but tomorrow, the Planning Commission does meet at noon at the New Beaver Borough Municipal Building. I'm hoping my colleagues, I can't go, I'm going to be out of town, but on county business, but I'm hoping my two colleagues are able to.
I will be there.
That's great, so I hope it's a good meeting.
Definitely is.
Amy, as always, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Have a great day.
You too.
We have a proposed budget amendment today. This is number 272. We do this when there is unanticipated or unbudgeted revenue that has come in, and we received $1,402.24 from the Emergency Management Agency. It's from the Emergency Management Agency of the Commonwealth, I believe. And we're, it's, we're noting it under the revenue fund account for Department of Public Safety.
Correct.
Thank you. And then where we're allocating those dollars is towards their travel and training line item, and this is for reimbursement for the 2024 Homeland Security Conference that either Mr. Strau, Strauw, or some of his folks were likely attending. Thank you. Mr. Sinata, any questions on this one?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion for proposed Resolution 272?
I vote for it.
Approved Resolution 272.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen, and if there are no other questions, we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Veltor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have four transfer requests. I'll read through them. Gentlemen, stop me if you have any questions. Under the commissioners, we are asking for a transfer of $330 from the commissioner's contingency into that of the line item of maintenance and repairs. This is to cover invoices from Direct Image. That's the copiers. Thank you. The second request is from Domestic Relations. They are asking for a $1,230 transfer from their contingency into that of their electric line item to cover their electric bill with their building across the street, I assume. Thank you. Maintenance is asking for a transfer of $37,000. $17,000 of that is coming from their contingency, and then $20,000 of it is coming from materials and supplies. It's all going into their electric line item, and I'm assuming, is that for just the electric?
Yeah, most of the campus will be except for any, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. And then finally, the Treasurer's Office is asking for a $250 transfer from his contingency into that of maintenance and repairs, and that was also for Direct Image, which would be their copiers. Chris or Dan, do either of you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion then to approve the four requested transfers?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinata?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Veltor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Here with me just one second, please. Couple of announcements, since we've taken care of our voting matters. This board will convene one week from today, September 17, at 10:00 a.m. for our next public meeting. As we noted earlier, the County Planning Commission will meet tomorrow, September 11, at 12:00 noon, at the New Beaver Borough Municipal Building for their monthly public meeting. Now, if I'm not mistaken, the prison board meeting has been canceled. Is that your understanding?
Yes, it has been canceled.
That was a email we got.
Thank you. So it states here that there will be a prison board meeting on the 18th of September. That is not the case. I believe Mr. Lamancus is the chair.
I just found that out yesterday afternoon, so it was too late, so.
That's fine. That's fine, but I think we learned from the chair of that board that that meeting is canceled.
That's correct.